Fourth, ninth, two thousand twenty-four. We have a very full agenda this morning. So first of all, could you call roll call, please?
Commissioner.
Yes.
You're being live. There. Sir. You're up here.
Here.
Commissioner Bellows.
Okay, the first matter on the agenda this morning is the appointment of a new chair, election of a new chair of the commission. Are there any nominations for chair?
I'm Amy Gretchen.
A second.
Any further nominations? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand.
Zero.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Thank you. Um, the second matter on the minutes from the meetings in, on March twenty-second, twenty-seventh, excuse me. Um, are there any corrections to the minutes? If not, please, I would request a motion to approve the minutes. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Okay. Thank you. Uh, the next item on the agenda is a very long, convoluted process, and so I'm going to simplify it in one respect. Yes.
I am.
Oh, thank you, Ronnie, for reminding me. Uh, under our current rules, the meetings are scheduled for the fourth Wednesday of the month at nine-thirty in the morning. Which is, a lot of them work and have busy schedules. I would like to suggest that we change the rules to allow the meeting to be held maybe five or six o'clock in the evening, and, uh, they could be held on different Wednesdays of the month to provide more flexibility for scheduling.
You mean, not the third Wednesday of the month? A different Wednesday?
A different, yeah.
Okay, um, we do have a problem with, it usually coincides with the city council meetings, so how would that coordinate with the schedule?
I'm not suggesting that we do it on that.
That night, yes.
Yes.
But, um, tough and forward, right?
No, I just, but if we, if it needs to be appropriate to have a second planning commission meeting in, in a month.
Okay.
It would be appropriate to have some flexibility.
Okay.
So.
I made a suggestion here.
Yeah.
Do you choose Wednesday?
All right. Okay. All right. Then, if you want to stay on Wednesdays, it would need to be the second and the fourth would be your choices. Any further discussion?
Um, I think it's a good idea. I work, I had to take a day off work the other day, so going forward, I would need to be later in the morning to continue.
What time are you thinking of?
I've got some five or six, which for me, I don't work for everybody else.
Would five o'clock be too early?
Yeah, if the day works for me, I take eating classes, but, mm, I'm in my life around doing this in the day. Um, but yeah, I guess evening is, that's what works for everybody else to do that.
Okay.
Oh, good.
All right. Um, then I would entail, ask for a motion to, to change the options for planning commission meetings?
Well, say one, what's more, what you're.
Um, currently.
On different days.
Okay. I think we were talking about Wednesday, second and fourth Wednesday, at either five o'clock or six o'clock in the evening.
Two maybe.
Yeah.
Okay.
Option if, if we needed a second planning commission meeting in the same month. I move.
Make a motion.
Okay.
Take a motion to change the scheduled planning, um, current time to the fourth Wednesday of the month at.
Five o'clock?
Five, five, five o'clock was an option of the second, an additional on the second Wednesday of the month at five o'clock. Five o'clock, I mean, I don't, five o'clock works for me, but with six o'clock potentially, the easier I'd have been to take it, people are, um, people will work at five and give you a six. It works for me, I'm just.
The one of the reasons that I suggested five o'clock is that a lot of our citizens don't drive at night.
That's a good point.
And, and having it a little earlier could allow some of them to be able to come to the meetings.
Then we'd like to amend the motion to, um, have a tie for six.
We have a.
Sorry, I made a motion.
Don't have a second, yes.
And we can enter a second or.
I think, Commissioner, I think what you're suggesting is that the mover amended motion to.
Okay. I suggest that go with the movement for this motion, um, make an option of six o'clock, um, because during summer, we don't have a problem, and six o'clock does work better for many people who do work.
I'd like to amend my emotion to make an option for six o'clock.
Accepting that motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Really will give us a lot more flexibility. Okay. Item on the agenda, I'm pulling out the minor land partition from the rest of the discussion.
Actually, Gretchen, um, so I work for Williston Financial, and every element of check comes across my desk for the city of King City. I don't want that to be.
Okay. About.
I'm not sure all.
Well, we're not ready for this. Okay. I'm pulling the decision, the decision on the minor land partition to separate out a portion of lots with lots of numbers ending in one-five-zero-two, is that correct? Carter?
From.
From what?
From one-five-zero-two.
Yes. Uh, do you have a staff report regarding the item?
Very straightforward. From property, um, Al's Garden, separating from the Jason.
Okay.
Just for the part of the party. That's why we take short application, it doesn't really matter that we're, which is how that's. All the applications. And then, so, as my partition would go first, and that would have been.
Al's is part of King City.
Does the applicant want to make any comments about that minor partition? Yes, I guess we are opening a public hearing with respect to this minor partition. Yes, again. Um. Uh, any public testimony? I'm going to open this, first of all, now is the time for your announcement of your potential conflict.
Because the potential conflict is a risk, I work at Williston Financial Group, which has administrative work, but still, I deal with the check.
Uh, not exactly sure the level, so I'm going to go all the way to any potential. Uh, live in the Rivermead community, uh, I don't believe in. At all, but I used to work, I'm retired, I used to work for David Evans and Associates. I know they have some involvement with some of these processes. They have no equity in the company at this point. Um, I live in King City, I'm on abuse, and so I don't have a, we have a son, um, I believe so, it's possible then they could, they should apply a subcontractor on work that comes along in the future, but.
Don't have any conflicts of interest. Okay. Um, with that, I will request, has anyone, Ronnie left? Is there anybody online that would like to testify on this matter?
There is.
Makes, this is, this matter is limited to the minor partition separating, separating out Al's Garden Center. This does not apply to the rest of the application packet.
On, you should be able to talk now.
You know what? I, I just was listening to what she last said, so this only has to do about separating out Al's Garden lots, the rest of the new homes development?
That's, that's correct. That's correct.
Okay, then, I'm, I'm waiting for the next portion, then.
Okay.
I don't have anything to say about Al's, I, I have something to say about the rest of the project, so I'll wait, thank you.
Okay. All right. Is anyone in the audience have any comment regarding this minor partition? Okay. With that, I will close the public testimony portion of this, uh, meeting. Um, any discussion? Any further, I don't think you have any further comments next on this? Okay. Any questions on this? Um, although it's a favor of approving the minor partition to separate a lot ending in one-five-zero-two from one-five-zero-one, please raise your right hand.
Do we need a motion?
Yes.
Motion and second.
Okay. Um, I move that we accept the recommendations and conditions of approval for this Al's, um.
A second.
Second.
Okay. Sorry, I jumped on. Okay. Thank you. It just, it's just sort of, it was the whole rest of the program, so made sense to deal with it. Okay. Yes. Okay. Um, now we will move on to the rest of the agenda, which is to consider land use number twenty-four dash zero-one, development proposal for King City Town Center submitted by Pacific Community Design on behalf of the New Home Company. The action today is for the Planning Commission to hear public testimony, discuss and consider approving with conditions or denying land use number twenty-four dash zero-one, the development proposal for King City Town Center. With that, I will open the public hearing, and Mr. Carter will make a staff report.
Do you want to go through the script section?
Pardon?
Do you have the script?
Do I need to read all these attachments?
Yeah.
Okay. Disclaimer? Yeah, I think that would.
Okay.
I'm gonna screw this.
This will help me with my questions.
All right. Okay. All right. During this hearing, I will identify the subject, which I just have done, announce the hearing is open, and request anyone who feels they have feelings on this matter being considered. Failure to raise an issue in person via Zoom or by letter to the Planning Commission precludes that party from raising that issue at a subsequent time on appeal. If the planning commission, uh, planning commission decision is appealed, the council may or may not allow new evidence. You may also name and address any other approval criteria you think apply to this decision. If you wish to speak for, against, or comment in any way, when I call for testimony, please identify yourself as wishing to speak. You can do this by raising your hand visually, physically, or digitally, or typing your name in the checkbox. Ronnie will be handling, uh, testimony requests for people online. When you are called to speak, give your name, address, and make your statement. The maximum of time allowed for testimony shall be three minutes for individuals, fifteen minutes for applicants, and persons representing four or more persons, and five minutes for applicants of rebuttal. If your testimony would be, would be repetitive, uh, by that I mean repeating testimony already made by another person, but you would like the opportunity to appeal the decision, you must sign the hearing sign-in sheet located at the rear of the council chambers, or type your name in the chat box, or let staff know, and they will type your name in the chat box. Only those who have appeared before the Planning Commission in person via Zoom or in writing will be allowed to speak on appeal of this item to the city council. Please note that unless there's a continuance of this hearing, if a participant so requests before conclusion of this hearing, the record shall remain open for at least seven days, uh, seven calendar days after the date of the hearing. If the record remains open, such an extension shall not be subject to the so-called one-hundred-and-twenty day limit. Now, do any members of the Planning Commission wish to abstain from this hearing? Do any members of the Planning Commission wish, Planning Commission wish to declare a conflict of interest, and unfortunately, you have to re, restate?
Do it again?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so I still work for Williston Financial, um, I put that in an envelope, I send them out. That's it.
Live in Rivermead, I don't see an immediate effect with this application. I work for David Evans and Associates, uh, I no longer, I'm retired, I have no equity in the company.
Okay, um, I live in King City, I'm on abuse, so this development will be somewhat near me, um, and, uh, my family owned, my father has a long time owned a construction supply company, it's possible way out in the future when this is going, they sub, you may be able to, some of the material to the subcontract.
None for me. Um, if, are there any, is there any member of the audience who wishes to, um, raise a potential conflict with a member of the commission? Any one, any member of the audience wish to challenge the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission to hear this matter? With that, I'm going to ask for the staff report.
Well, on March second, King City received this development proposal and its review for completeness. It was deemed complete on March twenty-sixth, and then the Planning Commission held a workshop on March twenty-seventh. Information contained within the development proposal, what is actually being proposed, they had a chance to voice concerns and questions to the applicant, and then, going back, this hearing was scheduled today for April twenty-fourth. Uh, the proposal itself contains eight hundred individual lots, the lots themselves contain eleven-hundred-and-eighty-six units, approximately point-five acres of parks are proposed within the town center, thirty-three thousand square feet of purple space. Uh, as far as the uses and the neighborhood itself, everything within the application is in the Kingston Terrace Town Center neighborhood. All uses proposed within the neighborhood comply with the uses that are outlined within chapter sixteen-one-one-four, as well as the Kingston Terrace Master Plan. Uh, density requirements as part of the metro agreement for UGV expansion and part of the outlined in the Kingston Terrace Master Plan are met within this proposal. The minimum of twenty-two, or excuse me, twenty-two units per acre is met, as well as there are projections for, in the event of Al's Garden ever being developed, as well as the southern portion of the Town Center neighborhood, uh, the applicant has projections of meeting the minimal requirements for density at full buildout of this neighborhood, which is roughly eighteen-hundred units, and it complies with all projections for the minimum density of thirty-four-hundred units as is outlined in the Kingston Terrace. So for density, everything looks good from that perspective. Uh, for the regulating plan, the PSP seems to be, is aligned up within the minimum framework that is outlined in the PSP for these neighborhoods with the roads, for the collector roads, as well as arterial improvements, Roy Rogers and Deaf Ben. Um, there is some minor modifications within the line, the Terrace Boulevard and Kingston Terrace Boulevard, over those minor modifications fall within the framework, uh, that is allowed within the. Um, for the Kingston Terrace Goldside State Harbor, the applicant has provided enough ample resources, ample materials to show that they are compliant with that section, as well as their mitigation. Upland Wildlife and Habitat Conservation Area as well, the HDA. The nation proposed approximately twenty-four-hundred, uh, trees to be planted for, uh, area that is going to be developed, and their proposal is almost double of what the minimum requirements for that is, so that falls in line within the criteria of the code. As I mentioned, all the uses of the Kingston Terrace Town. Like, you have mixed use, you have single-family units, you have mixed, uh, apartment buildings, plaza space, parks, green space, trails, everything that is proposed is aligned with the outlines that are drawn out within the Kingston Terrace Master Plan. Tree removal, which is one of these applications, uh, they're proposing, of the two-hundred-and-eleven trees within this development site, one-hundred-and-seventy trees are proposed to be removed. Uh, at an hard risk report, as listed in exhibits, I, I believe, outline all the inventories of the trees that are to be removed, and their landscaping plan adequately provides and for, uh, their, some of these trees. For a lot of these development, uh, plans, they're preliminary at this point, so the landscaping plans, the preliminary blocks, uh, the construction plans, the design for all these buildings and their elevation setbacks, uh, their preliminary plans, the middles, appear to match the criteria, they have provided compliance matrices and exhibit fees that show all the dimensional standards for, um, their windows, for glazing, for all the interior specs for these buildings, and all these preliminary plans that are part of the, further analyzed on construction plans later on down the road, and those plans will also be ran by the city engineer and the city construction consultants, so from a purely cursory standpoint, plans match the criteria that are outlined within chapter sixteen-one-one-four of the Kingston Terrace District Code, and so it all, there is nothing outstanding within, uh, the code, um, and just to reiterate these applications, they have open plan review, the Upland Wildlife HCA, Kingston Terrace Goldside State Harbor, the floodplain drainage review, and then the tree removal permit, as well as the subdivision, and then the preliminary, or the minor five or addition that we tried to handle. Uh, additionally, they have provided us with service provider letters from Tiger that have planned, that have given approval and have shown that there is going to be adequate water supply, service provider letters, letters from CWS that have shown that, uh, CWS standards will be met, and they have conditions of approval that will be met. Um, dry disposal, uh, electric, all utilities have been provided, as well as neighborhood circulation, uh, TIA, so there's a traffic impact analysis report that has been provided, geotechnical analysis has been provided, um, as well as purple lines being installed for recycled water along parks and green spaces. All in all, a lot of these plans are preliminary, they will be checked for compliance later on, and much more finer detail on construction plans, landscaping plans are presented, presented to us later on down the road. Improvement, so there's conditions from county for Deaf Ben and Roy Rogers, and for the phasing, the development agreement was passed last week at the city council, the development agreement goes into very strict timelines for phasing for different aspects of the development that are going to be done in favor of the city, such as FDCs, so the city will be initiating a lot of FDCs development, and, uh, for example, when provision in the development agreement is that the applicant is, okay, to handle the city's FDCs on our behalf, but we are going to be employing a consultant, and the applicant is going to be paying the, and allowing FDCs for us, um, so it's a very city-friendly development agreement. Upon the findings within just the chapter requirements, um, the city staff has found that everything is, and then the recommendation is that we recommend approval with conditions. To the very end of the staff report, there's a fifty-six conditions from staff, minor modifications to the staff report, published last week, with this available, I presented each of you commissioners with a updated version, nothing substantial has been changed, a minor certification on a couple of different pieces, I think it was only five of the fifty-six conditions that were changed, um, the staff confirms that each of these conditions are all holistic with everything that we have been talking about and going along with and how we want to move forward with this, and there's also provisions within the conditions that dictate that all outside agency conditions of approval must also be adhered to, as well as recommendations from the consultant. as well as recommendations from the consultants. So all these construction consultants, geotechnical consultants, they have their own recommendations provided within their analysis reports. Those recommendations must also be adhered to, and that is outlined within the conditions of approval. That is all I've got. Do you have any questions?
Any member of the Planning Commission have a question, of staff? I have a couple of questions. I was, in your staff report, on page 101, it's on the reconfiguration of Roy Rogers and Beef Bend. It's indicating a left, northbound left turn. Beef Bend doesn't continue west of Roy Rogers. Do you mean a right lane, an extra right lane turn, turn lane?
Left turn.
It's indicating going north. On page 101.
Most of your northbound on Roy Rogers.
You can't turn left.
I think they, for now, but there's a lot over there, a driveway that goes that direction. And they have some construction vehicles that go in and out of that site. It's a federal site as well. They have some groundwater facilities over there. So they have to have an access into that site.
On a dedicated thing? Okay, alright. But there is no public street there, that's.
Access that lot, future site, that's a future park site.
Yes, yes. Alright, sorry. The technical question, I wanted to make sure I understood. Thank you. As to, I saw the letter from the city of Tiger. When I was on the Tiger Council, it was very clear that we were told that there was insufficient water to serve down in King City until the Cache Creek Reservoir was constructed. Is there a timeline for that to be completed?
My understanding that that information is not within the public realm due to security concerns, that I do not want people to know where this comes from. The city stance is that we're, they have provided us with a letter that.
Alright, I'm just, I'm concerned because I was on the inside and I knew what was going on. And I want to make sure that they have completed the necessary.
That we can get water.
The water will be available, you know, in two years. So, okay. Those are my preliminary questions. I have a lot of questions for the applicant. With that, I'm going to request that the applicant make their presentation.
My name is Camper DeDaro, I'm with New Home Company.
Are you, are you wired in there? You need to come in. Move this over there. Camper DeDaro with the New Home Company. Ronnie, can you hear her? Okay.
I'm here with our commissioners and staff for the presentation. First, I want to thank the, just like. We want to say that collectively this group and folks with New Home Company have been involved with many master plans. And you may or may not be familiar with them, but this is kind of our specialty. We love to create new projects with a multitude of housing offerings for all stages and walks of life. So single levels, single. The ability to decide to live close to one another. And so with that being said, we take a lot of pride in creating the neighborhood first. Some of those developments, you may. River Terrace, here in Tiger. Several developments within the Bethany Master Plan. Timberland in the Cedar Hills neighborhood, as well as Progress Ridge, right up the street here too. So again, this is our strength and the planning in this. With that being said, I'll turn it over to Maureen with specific community.
You might want to speak up because people who are online have to hear through this.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Maureen Jackson, and I'm an Associate Project Manager with PCV. For the record, my address is 12564 Southwest Main Street in Tiger. And today, I'm here, of course, with New Home Company and the Project Design and Development Team to present the land use package for the Kingston Terrace Town Center. Have a presentation, share that with everyone.
Thank you, Ronnie.
Okay.
Hopefully this works. So before we jump into the details, we do have a short video that we would like to share. The video illustrates how the proposed Town Center reflects the vision of King City's concept plan and the Kingston Terrace Master Plan. The video also offers views of the Main Street, Park Block, and natural open space amenities and improvements to Elsner, Roy Rogers, and Beef Bend roads. We ended here along Beef Bend back at the Main Street. So thank you. We hope that that offers everyone an idea of the variety of the amenities provided and the vibrant feel of the neighborhood. Ronnie, are you bringing it back up?
So where's that wonderful pond?
Yeah, that's the natural open space area in the southern portion of the site.
Okay. Oh, there it is, I see.
So I'll just continue to move forward. As we saw in the video, the Town Center includes three park blocks consisting of 6.5 acres. The park blocks are designed to include a dog park, playground, pickleball court, basketball court, soccer field, fitness stations, and open lawn area. The blocks do include a one-acre urban park located in the northern portion of the southern park block, which is just east of the site identified for the future municipal building. The urban park is designed with a splash pad and plaza space that can be used to host summer's markets or other city events. The Town Center also includes over 26,000 square feet of urban plaza space along Main Street. These plazas are located in between buildings and at intersections. The areas are designed with ornamental landscaping and formal and informal seating to create comfortable open spaces in the Town Center. These plazas offer residents of the multifamily unit to open space right outside their doors and provide restaurants and retailers along Main Street the opportunity to offer outdoor seating. Some of the plazas are sized large enough to provide space for food carts or other street vendors. The design of the Town Center encourages multimodal transportation. Safe and convenient off-street bike and pedestrian access is provided through the Town Center on linear green, multi-use trails and accessways located throughout the neighborhood. The frontages of Roy Rogers, Beef Bend, and Elsner are punctuated with accessways that offer direct bike and pedestrian access routes. Coming from the future Central and Beef Bend neighborhoods to the east, River Terrace 2.0 to the north, and the future Lasage Park, which is in the north corner. In addition to the park blocks, the Town Center development provides approximately 20 acres of natural open space area in the southern portion of the site, which is a clip in the video. The natural open space will include a regional stormwater management pond and the existing locally significant wetlands. Development of the Town Center includes enhancement to these natural resources with planting of native vegetation and wildlife habitat restoration. The area will be easily accessed by bikes and pedestrians through the mid-block accessways, and there is also a multi-use trail. Seating and overlooks provide residents and visitors with opportunities to enjoy the natural views. And Clean Water Services has reviewed the proposed stormwater management plan for the development and issued a service provider. Another letter, which is in exhibit M. So of course, the primary purpose of the Town Center development is to provide needed housing. The Town Center will ultimately provide 1,186 homes. A variety of homes for individuals and families of all ages and incomes are proposed, which include 400 apartments in the mixed-use and multi-dwelling buildings located along Main Street. City cottage-style homes located along Beef Bend Road. 198 front and alley-loaded row homes, which are located near the Main Street, fronting the park blocks and along Beef Bend and Roy Rogers. These homes are located to provide easy access and easy and convenient access to commercial retail and park and open space amenities. There's also 357 smaller rear-loaded, single detached homes located throughout the interior of the development. And they're all located within a block or two of the park blocks and the Main Street. There's 151 standard and larger-sized front-loaded homes located along the eastern and southern boundaries of the development to provide a transition between the high-density Main Street and the outer edges of the neighborhood as envisioned in the concept and master plan. So exhibit D of the application package provides architectural details and renderings of each style. And there's a matrix identifying how the homes comply with the Architectural Design Standards. With the first development in Kingston Terrace, the proposal provides an extensive utility and transportation infrastructure. The stormwater management plan does comply with Clean Water Services and the more restrictive Water Quality Standards. As I mentioned, CWS has issued a service provider letter for the proposed design. Our team has also worked with CWS on the sanitary sewer design for the development. Sanitary sewer improvements include extensions from the existing pump station eastward to serve the future developments in Kingston Terrace, and then northward to serve River Terrace 2.0. It also had worked with Tiger Water on the design of the water line main that will be extended from Southwest 150th along Beef Bend to serve the Town Center. The city of Tiger recently updated their water master plan to determine that they do have capacity to serve the development. So and again, a service provider letter from Tiger Water is provided in exhibit W. Working with CWS, we've also developed, the development also includes an extension of Purple Pipe that will provide recycled water for irrigation of the public parks and the future municipal sites. Transportation infrastructure includes improvements to frontages along Roy Rogers and Beef Bend roads, which include a multi-use path for bikes and pedestrians. These designs have been vetted by Washington County Transportation, and the final construction documents for these improvements will require the county's approval. Elsner Road, which is currently a county collector, will ultimately be transferred to the city. We do propose that Elsner be realigned to safely include a roundabout at the future east-west intersection, as identified in the Kingston Terrace Master Plan and the city's transportation system plan. North of the roundabout, which we've now identified as Southwest 161st Avenue, will include a left turn lane for access onto Beef Bend. South of the roundabout, Elsner has been designed to minimize impacts to the adjacent natural resources, which include the locally significant wetlands. To promote bikekeeping and provide a comfortable pedestrian environment, the street is designed to include a two-way cycle track as well as a sidewalk. The new streets interior to the neighborhood include the north-south extension of River Terrace Boulevard. There's a new east-west collector identified as Kingston Terrace Boulevard that will extend from Roy Rogers through the roundabout at 161st Avenue and then continue eastward into the Beef Bend neighborhood. There are two neighborhood routes. One will run north-south adjacent to the park blocks, and there's a second neighborhood route which runs east to west, and that one is designed with a linear green along the northern side of the street, which will provide a comfortable and direct pedestrian and bicycle connection from the Main Street through the park blocks and then the future development to the east. Local roads and alleyways complete the circulation system. A service provider letter has been obtained from CBSNR documenting their approval of the circulation system in terms of emergency and fire access, and that letter is provided as Exhibit N. Interior transportation improvements also include two roundabouts. One is located at the eastern boundary, and a second is proposed at the intersection of River Terrace and Kingston Terrace Boulevards, just north of the future municipal building. An enhanced raised intersection has been designed for the northern intersection of River Terrace Boulevard at Fellow Drive to signalize to vehicles, cyclists, and pedestrians that they are entering into a slow-moving urban environment, and the movement of bicycles and pedestrians through these intersections have been considered in the design. From feedback and questions received during the Planning Commission workshop for this application, we, today we have Chris Bremer, who's the Senior Principal Engineer from Kittleson, to briefly discuss the transportation impact study conducted for the project and recommended improvements.
Okay, I'm Chris from Kittleson. Mail address, State 51, Southwest 6th Avenue, Suite 600 in Portland, with code 97204. I'm walking through four quick slides. If you have more questions at the end, I'm happy to go into detail, but just want to provide you a quick overview of the traffic study. That study was scoped and completed for the departments of Washington County in the city. With respect to Roy Rogers itself, we looked at four intersections that are listed here. These were selected based on the county's criteria that includes distance from the site as well as the amount of traffic added to the intersections. We'll go through what we found and need to them, but our analysis is based on how the system works today, and then we look out to the future year 2030, how does the system work for the development and then with the development trips. We look at the morning commuter peak hour and then the afternoon commuter peak hour to make sure we're capturing the most congested points of the day. Ultimately, our study recommends improvements that are consistent with the city's transportation system plan and essentially building on that toolbox that the city has adopted. You could go to the next slide, please. I want to focus first on the intersection of Beef Bend and Roy Rogers, and I know Sarah already asked a question here, so just kind of walk through in a little more specific what we're doing. We will be widening Roy Rogers. Standard county improvement is to widen a half of Roy Rogers along our frontage. What we found from the traffic study is we need to go above and beyond that to add capacity to the intersection. If you've driven out there, you know it's congested today. We will be building two continuous northbound through lanes along the site frontage that continue north of Beef Bend and then taper down to a single lane. Beef Bend itself will be widening the roadway to its ultimate three-lane section, which for those pulling up to the red light, you have more storage for your left and right turn lanes, so that'll operate more efficiently. And then we are extending the southbound upturn, so coming south on Roy Rogers, turning out to Beef Bend. That turn lane itself will be longer so that more cars can store there and not be backing out into the through traffic. And then we are providing a northbound upturn lane, which admittedly only serves a very low-use driveway today, but it provides that safe refuge so that someone going to the driveway doesn't have to stop in the through-traffic way. So, those improvements collectively have been vetted with the county and provide not only enough capacity for this project, but some reserved capacity behind it. Going to the next page, just looking at the intersections in the corridor. Up at Beef Bend, we just walked through the improvements there. We're working with Al's Garden Center and the county to redefine access to Al's so that they will continue to have access to Roy Rogers, but also have access to that new traffic signal. It will give them a signalized place to make a left turn out onto Roy Rogers. We will be building a new traffic signal directly south of them at the new Kingston Terrace Boulevard. That'll be a requirement of the project to construct and then turn that on. And then finally, down at Elsner, we're adding a northbound right turn lane, so if they're making that right turn onto Elsner, you have a place to slow down and get out of the through lane. So, those improvements will all be developed. Their conditions of approval at the different project phases, and like I said, they've been vetted with the county and so the city staff. Go on to the next slide, and I'll wrap up with Beef Bend. I'll show this just so that you can understand how Beef Bend works once you turn off Roy Rogers. We will be building the ultimate three-lane road across Beef Bend, consistent with typical county practice. We've also identified right turn lanes into some of the key roads serving the site, as well as left turn lanes, and those are based on the amount of turn traffic being added at the intersection, again, looking at Washington County's criteria. Off-site over at 161st, we'll be adding a left turn lane on Beef Bend to turn to what's today, Elsner, the new one. I'll go through that and ask her if that should help pretty dramatically with certain operations there. So, with that, I'm going to conclude and back to Marie if there are questions. Happy to take them.
Okay. Looking on, also in response to questions received during the Planning Commission workshop, our team received confirmation from Washington County staff that the county's Goal 5 standards, which are currently under review, do not apply to property annexed into King City, which the town center, this project, of course, has been annexed into the city. The city's Kingston Terrace District Goal 5 Safe Harbor Review Code, which was recently adopted, establishes standards to protect the locally significant wetlands and upland habitat resources in the master plan area. As you can see here, the site does contain the locally significant wetlands in the southern portion of the site, and the development proposes to restore, enhance, and enhance this natural resource area to create a higher-functioning resource, natural habitat, and community amenities. Also seeking approval of an upland wildlife habitat conservation area review. While a large area of the site is mapped with riparian and upland resources, there are only 170 trees located on the 136-acre site, and there's no native trees located within the mapped HCA area. To mitigate impacts to the HCA area, the proposal will provide over 6,000 trees and 16,000 shrubs. Trees and shrubs identified on the Metro Native Plant List will be used in resource buffer locations, stormwater facilities, and where appropriate in parks and open space tracks. Priority will be given to native and drought-tolerant plants throughout the community. The application also includes a floodplain hazard review. Currently, a portion of the floodplain located on the southern portion of the site is cut off from the wetlands and natural resources. While we are proposing to fill this cutoff area, which is shown here in red, the proposal is designed to provide 6,600 cubic yards more floodplain volume than what exists today. The additional floodplain located adjacent to the wetlands will further enhance the function of these natural features. That's the end of our presentation. Our team of designers, engineers, and experts are here if you have any questions, and thank you again for allowing us this time.
Thank you. Any questions of the applicant at this point?
Yes. I have one very simple question, and then I have a pile more, but I'll just ask the simple ones. Where does our Fisher Road come entering? Okay. And what sort of design modifications have you done to let users know they're not supposed to be there? In other words, one of the, as you know, one of the main public comments and objections to the whole thing is that Google or whatever is going to send everybody down the street at, you know, 45 miles per hour, which we know, and we only wanted at 25, but there are other ways of mitigating, of signaling.
So, currently Fisher Road, which is identified on the transportation system plan and the master plan, is that east-west collector.
Right.
What we've done is we've realigned Elsner, so Elsner will continue to be the collector, however, it will, at the roundabout, it merges or transfers into the Kingston Terrace Boulevard, which will provide better access for Beef Bend from the north and then Roy Rogers to the west. And then Carmelo, which also intersects right at that roundabout, that is designed as a neighborhood route, and that includes on-street parking and the linear greenway, which will have more pedestrians and bicyclists. So, that'll provide a visual cue for drivers that they're entering into this lower neighborhood. And also, the homes along Kingston Terrace Boulevard have been oriented and landscape designed to also indicate that they're entering into an urban environment that'll slow traffic.
Okay, good. All has to do with Google sending you through. A people's go, "Why does Google send me here?" Okay, that's my first question, and I will let other people ask questions now.
I have a small question on the transportation plan. The improvements on Beef Bend, will there be a sidewalk only on the Kingston Terrace side of the street and no improvements on the Tiger's side of the street?
My, so once you're saying behind me, you get that it's a plan.
Okay, all right. So, I'm just making, so we'll need to make sure that somehow people know that there's sidewalks only on one side of the street. It'd be a problem for folks.
Okay. I have a question. I'm now a disabled adult myself. Going upstairs to bedrooms is a problem for me. There are a lot of folks with various disabilities, not to mention seniors. I didn't see in your choices of housing structures, particularly for the smaller houses, any options for having a bedroom and full bath on the first floor. And I would ask, is there any option to make that a choice?
So, looking at the footprints, you did notice those are two-story. In order to meet the density, which are very high in the town center area, we were unable to offer a floor sale component that offers a single story or a single level that would put a bedroom on the main floor. There is the, we also have two residential-only buildings that at some point decide to offer those for sale. It has not been part of our consideration at this time, but just if we went to a single story, it really defeats the purpose of the meeting.
No, I understand that. I'm just raising that as it is a deterrent to a significant portion of the population, which the demographics are, regionally, we're getting older, and it's going to be an issue. Also, I've seen in some other communities, this is the real estate lawyer talking, in other states where they have put condos on the first floor that are specifically can be retrofitted for someone with disabilities, and then maybe had rentals split, so there's rentals on the floors above there. And I thought I would mention that as something as you're doing your, we're down to the nitty-gritty planning.
I condesciate that. I will also add that on our standard and large-size lots, there is an opportunity to put a, calling there.
I'm aware of that, but those are going to be much more expensive homes, too.
On that, I was going to suggest looking at the cottage homes and having a first floor, in Chicago, we call them two flats, so that you have two apartments on one building. I was thinking that maybe you could combine cottage home to each other, and that way you could have a floor level for me and for Gretchen, where all the friends that kept moving last week, they all moved into townhouses.
Yeah, that is something that we probably wouldn't have done since.
Yeah.
Yeah, these are ideas that could make it a more user-friendly community for all of us. So, um, let's see, there was, I had my whole list of questions quickly. Oh, okay. Next question, there's the current pond, and my understanding is it's going to be left there until the permanent stormwater retention facility has been constructed and completed? Am I correct?
The location of the current irrigation pond is mainly located where it's your, well, identified. So, what we're going to do with the first phase of construction will be to support the construction and development at initial grading, irrigation pond, in the community site. The irrigation pond that currently resides out there will be with this first phase. Do you have any questions?
Yeah.
Any questions?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, first off, when I started reading this, I had lots of questions, almost all of which were answered as I went through it. Some of my few remaining ones have been answered already, so I'm just down to, out of the exterior questions. I noticed on the community meeting that was held, it absolutely complied with the development code requirements. Kind of bringing up, I think, the development code requirements were really not adequate for this proposal. I mean, this is huge, and should, you know, nobody within King City or a small radius of King City that I've talked to knew that it happened. So, my only question is for future applications, because this application does comply with everything that the code told. Would you support King City posting information on its website just to make things, you know, maybe making sure to do it in person plus Zoom, so that there was more pre-application opportunity for this and input?
We would welcome that, yes. We actually, I believe, the City of Hillsborough, they do also recommend that if you're going to have a virtual meeting, to also have an in-person meeting. to also have an in-person meeting. And we welcome the feedback.
And I also, I also wanted to share in the development agreement there is, um, was a request to have the developer and team provide updates to, and any future developments that.
Can I see that within the development?
It's a pretty extensive list of, of communication. So we absolutely.
Question two, and this is a real minor one, and it could be, I just didn't find it. Uh, I noticed on the plan a swim center there. My understanding is that's not a public pool. I'm just curious, who owns and maintains it? Who gets to use it?
That's a great question. So the pool is designed as part of the multifamily. It is considered private, so only the residents of the multifamily would be in that, and that, uh, that belt is within state made.
Okay, so that section of, like an HLA, or?
It's, it's basically the management company that we hire. The third-party management company would care for the pool and making that pool.
Yeah, that answers, that answers.
And just, can I just interject one thing? There is a municipal site on that. And on our municipal site, it's our intention to have a rec center, hopefully cool, and city hall, all on that site.
Okay.
To a rec center, I did not know.
Or a school.
I also didn't know, I know Tigered's gonna have a major park, I don't know what's.
Across the way.
What's included on that.
Yeah, so our idea is to have a rec center that could augment that. So they'd have like their outdoor fields and play areas and everything else. We'd have a rec center there that would provide some indoor facilities and indoor options for the residents of King City. That would probably work similar to what, uh, Walton Hills Parks and Recreation does within their districts, where you're in the district, you get, uh, the discount. If you're outside the district, you pay.
Okay. And then one, one last one. Talked a little bit about Fisher Road. I, I see, um, there's, you know, things, things are going on and changing within King City, and, and city council is about to have a lot of new members and stuff. Everything in your application deals with existing code now. And this question kind of leads to what if in the future? But, you know, it doesn't affect this vote, my deal. But is there any, you know, the, the main issue has always been Fisher Road extension. Is there anything that you're aware of in this existing thing? And I see no alignment differential, but, uh, that further locks in the proposed existing Fisher Road extension alignment to the east of your development. I, I would say, for example, is there a funding agreement for one of the roads that's contingent on a particular recipe chosen in the future to the east?
Let me turn this over to Patrick, our engineer. The location of the roundabout has been determined just for geometric purposes and reasons, and then with interaction with the intersection at Beef Bend.
I'll, I'll do my best to answer your question. In terms of some financial agreement, um, that dictates the alignment of that road that extends to the east, I'm not aware of any. There's certainly not one with this development, or it's part of the DA. In terms of how our roundabout location would dictate the alignment moving east, I think there's still kind of flexibility for that, rather than it being used our site, um, until it hits, uh, the connection point with the existing King City. So, yeah, I would say there's very little with our roundabout location that would.
Thank you, thank you, Anne. I, I, I will comment. Well, well put-together application from my point. This is obviously you guys, not you guys' first rodeo.
Do you have any first? Yeah, I, I do have questions now. I'm wondering if this is the time to be thinking about the infrastructure for, um, renewable energy and for, um, car charging. Do you have any, are there any ideas out there that haven't been drawn in yet?
So you will notice, I believe it's in the application. Plus two, or no, forty percent of the residential parking within the mixed-use and apartments, they do have capacity for EV charging.
Okay.
Individual homes, that'll have to be on base, case-by-case basis.
Oh, okay.
And honestly, the cost of that charging infrastructure would probably increase the cost of the home.
Okay. Well, 'cause we're hoping to only be driving electric cars soon.
Yes.
In the lifetime of these buildings, so, um, it, it's more expensive to put it in afterwards. I wish we had state codes that all the buildings should have car charging.
Patrick, maybe you can weigh in on this, too, if you have anything. But I would say, too, that, um, offering forty percent of the, um, commercial mixed area is in line with the number of electric cars on them, on the road, and then some. Um, I will say that all of our garage spaces have the ability to have an EV charging, um, within the private, um, garage space, too. So that, I feel like that's positive. A lot of people are buying on electric cars, and they're able to make that change at the purchase or slightly after.
Okay, good, all right, okay.
Is it only the multi-dwelling units with the garage that have the ability to have that car charge port, or do they also have it on the street?
On the street as well. We wire first, we, we just need to make sure that PGE has capacity. And that is part, there's capacity for forty percent. Anything above and beyond that is where I want it.
I'll have to know about that, but. Um, I do know with PG's updated design, we've seen a lot of changes in the last couple of years, and, um, they have definitely upgraded the amount of transformers that they require. It's a patient, a lot more on EV charging.
Okay, yeah.
Their system. So they're, they're anticipating the growth in that sector moving forward and the PG infrastructure that will be installing with this development.
Okay, cool. And also, um, civil engineer, right? Okay. My first baby was born during the Northridge earthquake in Los Angeles. So, earthquake, um, think about earthquakes. I'm wondering how the, um, how the cut and fill in the south and might, um, might affect liquefaction. I noticed that there was, um, in the earthquake, that there doesn't seem to be any problems here, 'cause we're sitting on rock. But once you start cutting and filling, you got things going on. Can you explain that to me?
No. I'll do my best to explain, um, you know, and it's, it's written in the geotechnical report, recommendations on the required compaction effort needed for those cuts and fills. Um, the wall design takes into account seismic, um, design for earthquakes.
Okay.
The same thing with their, uh, recommendations on foundation design for the buildings. Homes takes into account seismic design as well.
Okay.
In terms of the fill that we're putting on the south end of our site, are you talking specifically about pond or?
Yeah, um, red and blue, basically.
Red and blue.
Yeah.
In terms of the fills associated with our, our floodplain, those will be monitored pretty closely.
Uh-huh.
Doing that with structural material back. So, um, there's definitely requirements regarding what kind of. These are geotech structures.
Okay.
So there's, there's a lot that can go into, um, determining what materials go in there, process that when the contractor installs those materials meticulously.
Okay. Because what I read, and maybe I didn't, I didn't read it very thoroughly, I'll admit, was that, it's the opinion that there weren't many hazards in this area, earthquake hazard, so not a lot had been done. And, um, so I'm glad to hear that you're talking about, you know, we're gonna tie our houses to the foundations. That's what I'm thinking about. Because we have an earthquake, um, you might be able to get your house fixed if there's someone to fix it, and they're not the senior neighbors. Another thing I'm going to ask is we have this wonderful gray water system, and I'm wondering, where, where's the storage for that? How does that work?
My understanding, and this is a new thing. We're installing right now would be a. The infrastructure that in the future could connect to Clean Water Services verbal pipe system.
Okay.
So, so for our parts, all we're doing is putting in the structure that would bring that system. Bring it into the municipal pipe system, extend it to the northwest so that it could, um, in the future, help irrigate the, the future City of Tigered Park.
Right.
So major, major irrigation systems that would be needed, we're providing that infrastructure there, um, during kind of what we call construction, where it's easier and cheaper to install it. So in the future, Clean Water Services would be able to extend that pipe, too, I think.
All right, all the way down there, okay.
That's my understanding.
Okay.
I think the script allows us to ask questions again, so we have people that are waiting to comment, perhaps.
Okay.
Well, the reason, the reason I wanted to allow these questions is it may answer questions that people online and in person want to ask or make comments about. I'm trying to make sure that they're informed as possible before we have public testimony.
I just have one question slash comment. There are very few studio and one-bedroom apartments available in the plan, and I would like to see more of those, um, because those are affordable for beginners.
And seniors.
And seniors.
Okay, I have a couple of quick, quick questions. Bike storage. And, um, some of us can't ride a bike. We ride, can ride a trike. And so I would hope that as you think about those facilities, that you provide, uh, options for folks to be able to use trikes. I'm looking forward to being able to someday, if be able to afford a, an electric trike. On the liquefaction issue, the reason I was concerned is I was on the steering committee working on the Lake of Three Go Tigered water system. And when they built the new water treatment plant, because of the liquefaction faction, fact, um, due to the Missoula flood, um, they had to go down a hundred and sixty feet for the pilings for that building. And I'm concerned where the new municipal building is going to be, that we are, what kind of pilings are they gonna need for that building? And I certainly hope that as you review those plans, you think about that kind of issue, because the Missoula flood wasn't quite as bad on the Tuolotin, but it did cause flooding. And that particular area has been flooded umpty, 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 umpty times in my lifetime. So. Also, please, when you do your plan, no English plane trees. They're on-city allowed tree plants. They love to break sewers. Sewer.
Right.
And water lines. Speaking from personal experience down the street here. Finally, I have one more, let me see. Okay. Okay. Oh. I'm a master gardener. Samsa flies are horrible pests. They eat good bugs that we need. Please change the name of that street. It also would be very difficult for people who live there to remember, et cetera. Samsa fly.
Oh, right, yeah.
I do have, at, at some point, I would like to get some more information presented on the development plan that the council approved last week or the week before. I think we need to get some of that information on the record. You want to do that now or after public comment?
Uh, well, we have city, uh, attorney here who worked on that development agreement.
Could you?
I missed the question without answering another question. Uh, they'd like a brief on the development agreement.
Then we'll move to part, public comment.
First, my name's Ezra Hammer. I'm with the law firm, Jordan Ramis, as routine by the city of King City, assisting drafting the development agreement as part of the overall proposal. And as the chair mentioned, was before the city council approval last week. Development agreements are essentially contracts that allow cities to sign agreements with private parties to cover items that aren't otherwise addressed in the development code, and very typical for large-scale projects such as these. The development agreement, which the city council approved, really seeks to effectuate three things. The first is to determine the appropriate phasing transportation improvements, to tie those transportation improvements to the various phases of the development as a whole. As you can tell by the project, it's very large, and we want to ensure that the appropriate transportation improvements are occurring at the appropriate times with the appropriate phase. The second thing it does, which was referenced previously, is it sets up a, a novel scheme to allow for the developer to construct the public park infrastructure. Doing so allows for better timing and synergies with the construction of the parks. It's that responsibility off the city. Also sets up a escrow account whereby the developer will pay park impact fees directly into that escrow account. That account will be managed by a third-party consultant, who is familiar with this work and worked with THPRD in the past, in other projects. Once the developer completes the park infrastructure to the status quo in the city, they will then receive reimbursement from that. The third thing that the development agreement does is speaks to the timing of the construction of the stormwater management facilities. As was discussed, there's really a two-step approach. For phases one and two, there's gonna be a temporary stormwater facility. This facility will be the site of the future municipal, um, facility. Upon the completion of phase two, the developer will construct the permanent stormwater management facility. It will remediate temporary stormwater management facility site to a level that can then be developed with the desired city infrastructure. That site will then be sold to the, um, city at, uh, and allow the city to construct that infrastructure. Your city home, tech center, and, and other desires. So that's really the purpose of the development agreement, again. It just is a, essentially a contract that allows the city to do what I articulated and to agree to those manners that aren't otherwise explicitly identified. Would you have the answer any?
And has the individual or company that will be handling the escrow account that you were talking about for parks, et cetera, has that person been indicated?
Um, the city is currently in the. The city is currently in the process of identifying that individual.
That will, a contract will be entered into with that entity?
The development agreement really allows for that agreement to.
Are there any other questions from commission members? Thank you very much. And I have one final question. Why are you not developing the corner in phase one? You're going all around it. It doesn't make sense.
I need to think a little bit to that. There's, there's a couple of elements at play with that, I guess. One of the big, to kind of remember with his first day is, is the developer is investing quite a bit of money in the transportation, prevents there on that Big Bend-Roy Rogers intersection. That's a lot of work to complete in, in one construction season. Additionally, onsite, it's our goal to complete all of first phase in this current construction season, that we have lots available to sell the following spring of 2025. It's really important to the business plan to start recouping all those transportation improvement costs, right? So having to carve off a piece that was tall enough that we could actually implement this year, but also had a variety of, sorry, product types, right? So we have apartments, throw homes, alley loaded in that first phase. So it's really important to have a high variety, also a piece that was small enough that we could carve off and actually build this year. That answer the question?
Okay. I understand. Without any further questions from, from the applicant, I'm going to open the public hearing, and let's start with the folks who are online. And again, I apologize for the delay, but hopefully this additional information has helped you understand the project better.
I have a quick question online that relates to stormwater management facility. What is that?
If you guys look it up, then I'll move on to the next person who had a comment, and that's Dawn Mobley. If I can bring her on.
Yes. Ms. Mobley, we, we're ready to hear from you.
Oh, great, thank you. I did want to just start by saying, I appreciate, actually, you asking all those questions. It did help answer a lot of things. I, I think my main disapproval of you guys approving this application today really does boil down to the fact that one of the planning commissioners did bring up that this opportunity has not been given to King City residents yet. It was only given to those within a 250-foot radius around the project. And that's just, it's very unfortunate seeing that it is the site of the municipal site. I don't feel that many residents even know that there is a rec center that's been approved. And that is a concern to me in regards to just the possibility that that recreation center might actually hold a public pool and a library, and those tax dollars will be needed to run and upkeep, upkeep these public buildings and services. The King City voters do have a right to review and provide comments to what their tax dollars will pay for, and that stuff was not offered to the King City residents on January 11. As stated on page 88 of the Kingston Terrace Master Plan, King City could go into debt of $26 million without voter approval to cover the majority of the cost of the building, the community facility, or to, or it could be funded through a voter approval go-bond with an average property tax levy of $4.28 for $1,000 assessed value, which brings that tax to approximately $1,500 a year for homeowners of a home that's $350,000. And there's also stated on that page is another alternative to create a new urban renewal district. And again, that's all tax money that voters have, you know, have a right to know about. And, you know, what is being built does matter on this particular project. It's not just homes. It is a lot of park, and it is the municipal site. So what that will mean tax-wise, tax dollars, is a big concern on that upkeep, not just the build. So, you know, this project should probably be set aside before it's set in stone in, in order to make those comments public to the, to the King City voters. And then also along those lines, I know we talked a little bit about the Fisher Road and the TSP. I understand it's been approved, but it is in question. We did just have a big recall of counselors. The community really needs another chance to look at the, the TSP, and I do feel that that is an issue to be resolved before the Kingston Terrace project should be approved. Thank you. Oh, and I don't know if I said, I'm Dawn Mobley. I live on 170 Rio Southwest 137th Avenue.
Thank you. I was going to ask you your, your address. I can personally, from personal experience, answer the urban renewal district. That would require a vote of the people who live in King City of, to approve of urban renewal district. And I can't speak. The city staff would have to speak to how funding of management, whether that would have to go through a, a public hearing process on those specific items. I don't know the answer. That would have to, yeah, the rec pool.
Yeah, the rec center in City Hall, and, I mean, it's not what's on issue today, you know, any funding that needs to be discussed later, and right now we're working on preliminary architectural design for that. So it's just in a fledgling stage right now.
The rec center is separate from this development proposal. The only thing that is part of this is that the land for the rec center will eventually be given to the city, sold to the city, or sold to the city.
In cooperation with TBFNR as well. So it's not just City Hall, but it's also fire station, police station, City Hall, rec center. It's a public municipal building, and we don't have much of that, so.
So all we're handling in this particular hearing is that there would be dedicated land that at some point in the future could be used for a municipal building, rec center, et cetera. Fire station, I know that that agreement is pending with the fire district already. There's a need for another fire station.
And I understand that. I'm just simply saying that this, this should be, this should be given to the King City voters to take a look at and have public knowledge that this is what's happening, and that was not given to the King City voters prior to this public hearing. That was my point. And yes, it's going to hold all these things, some we need, some we might not need, and I understand that that will be decided a little later, but it is the point that this is a big project, it's going to include public buildings, and that was not discussed at this, to the extent that it was today, has not been given to the King City voters prior to the application, and that was what I is disapproving of. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, it's Dawn, but I can't remember your last name. I apologize.
That's okay. Dawn Mobley, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else online?
No.
Okay, last call for people online.
Just a question about the stormwater facility.
Oh, right.
Do you remember on that?
Sorry.
We did, thank you for that question. The stormwater facility is approximately three acres.
At this point, are there people in the audience who would like to comment on the project? On this application, I should say?
Does that include the significant weather piece as well, or just?
No, so the question was for stormwater and the open space tract. So how much was the open space? Was it 26?
Yeah, it was over 20 acres.
Yeah, so like combined, they were something around 25 acres.
Again, is, is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this application? Not seeing anyone in the public comment portion of this hearing. Now I have to find my. All right. And I close the public portion of this hearing at 11:13 a.m. Okay. What is the pleasure of the planning commission?
We thought I moved that we accept this application for Kingston Terrace Town Center project.
And I was going to ask, could you elucidate all of the different codes and, and ideas that we have to approve within this motion?
Oh, okay.
There are six combined heavy stuff. Subdivision, third-party disposal, and review, upland wildlife HCA review, the habitat conservation area review, Kingston Terrace Goldside Safe Harbor review, the floodplain and drainage hazard review, and then the tree removal permit.
Okay. Are you including those items in your motion?
You said something about subdivisions and minor property?
No, well, the minor amendment is already been settled.
Okay, all right. So there's nothing?
So the subdivision, development plan, wildlife HCA review, the Goldside Safe Harbor, floodplain and drainage hazard review, and then tree removal permit. Six total applications.
Okay. I move that we accept, that we approve for recommendation to the city council.
No, it's, this is the actual approval.
Oh, we approve it? Okay.
Yeah, the three are good. So this is the plan.
Oh, we approve?
Yeah.
Okay.
And you can, Councilwoman Bellis, you can say just as simple as, I move to approve the consolidated application with the conditions proposed by the staff with the minor amendments.
Okay. I move we approve this combined application with the conditions included by the staff and what else?
Including the minor amendments that were put forth.
Including the minor amendment put forth to, is that for Al's or that for Myers?
Those are for the conditions, so there were just some minor amendments.
Including the minor we got today. Minor amendments to the conditions as, five.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Excuse me. I would like to, did we say anything about the fact that this is kind of a general and not a, okay, so your recommendations and this is an approval do say that it is preliminary only, so I don't think that.
No, the bonus is preliminary, yes.
There will be more detailed planning, a lot more that has to be done once you have the overarching picture.
I want that until now. I want you to put that much time in right now. Okay. So I don't have any discussion.
Comments from? Well, I'm, I'm going to, somebody, are we ready for a vote? Okay. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand.
Five zero unanimous.
And is there anything else on our agenda today that we need to go through? I think, I think we're just, okay, I just wanted to make a comment. I've been a real estate and land use lawyer for, well, I've now retired, but 40-plus years, and I've worked for developments, against developments. I've been a community officer, I've been a planning commissioner in three different This is one of the best project applications with completeness and willing to answer the questions that I threw at you at the workshop so that you'd be prepared to answer. Thank you so much for doing such a good job. I wish everybody would do this kind of quality of work. It's really important. This is difficult. It's the biggest thinking that we're going to see, and thank you for doing such a good job. You really were able to educate us as planning commissioners, and that's important, because we, most of us are not planning professionals. I mean, we're luckily, we had somebody who has worked in the industry for many years, you had experience at a different phase of the industry, but the whole picture. So I wanted to say thank you very much.
We appreciate you saying that.
Yeah. Whether you agree with the plan or not, it was well done. Thank you.
Cool plan.
And unless there's no further business, I'm going to adjourn the meeting at 11:19.
Okay.
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.